Okay, welcome to the zoning board of appeals. Please silence all cell phones and note that this meeting is being taped by FCTV. I'll introduce the board and staff. On my far right is Mark Fineran, a voting member. To his left is Scott Peterson, a voting member. To my right is Frank Duffy, the clerk. I'm the chair, Suzanne Murphy. To my left is James Morse, the vice chair. To his left is Tony Petucci, an associate. And we have Nick Haney, another associate on the end. Staff is Noreen Stockman, our zoning administrator, and Ashley DeMello, office assistant. If there's any private party recording this, please step up to the podium and request Let's see, the zoning board of appeals is charged with applying the state zoning statutes as well as the town zoning bylaws in reviewing and voting on this application. All decisions are made through the public hearing process. Our goal is to hear testimony from the applicants and the public and to allow a full and fair discussion of the project prior to closing the hearing process and reaching a decision. Number one, to begin each hearing, the clerk will read the public announcement for the hearing and read pertinent information from the file. Two, the applicant or the applicant's representative will then have 15 minutes to make a presentation, but time may be extended by a vote of the board. Three, the board will then question the applicant. Four, next, the public will be invited to comment. Comments should be limited to two minutes and be strictly related to the proposal. All members of the public wishing to speak should wait to be recognized by the chair and should come to the podium. You state your name and address for the record. Please speak into the microphone. It will amplify your voice and record audio for the FCTV viewers. And then we have a part right before we start where if anyone wants to make a public comment, you can come up to the podium, anything that's not related on our agenda tonight. Anybody want to come up? No hands? So we're good. So we'll start off, we have three 40Bs tonight. We'll start off with Broken Bow. Case 100-24.
Good evening.
Good evening, Nick.
Nick Marioni, representing the applicant. When we were here last time, it was some, say displeasure expressed at the site plan, most specifically in this area where we had an eight-unit studio building. So we've requested, we're requesting a change of the project from a residential rental project to a homeownership project of 12 units instead of 16. And that's what you're looking at here. We have eight three-bedroom and four two-bedroom units in six duplexes. The, this, I'll come back to this. This is, we'll also show the buffering plan, but the other issues that came up were sewerage. We've got confirmation from the sewer department, this project will be sewed. I believe you all got a letter on that, that stated that Broken Bow should be available to connect to the sewer, I believe in '27. So we're going to change the design in our sewerage to allow for what they're proposing for that street. Then drainage was a major issue. So what we've done, redesigned our drainage. Professor, I'm going to show you. This is a 1972 plan that's on record that shows that there were two catch basins in this street that went, was supposed to go to a leaching field in this area. They never did, apparently. We haven't found the catch basins yet, but we've been told by people in the area that they are there. So I believe they're probably leaching catch basins that have filled up. We're either going to replace them or open them up, connect them to... Open them up, connect them to a manhole, bring the manhole onto our site and connect it into our drainage plan, which all ends up out here and then eventually into the state land where it's going now. In addition, there was concern from abutters up on Homestead that have taken quite a bit of water off of Homestead, flows through their property onto our property, and they were concerned that we were going to change the grade and flow it back to them. We're not doing that. We've got a couple of cisterns in here, we're picking up that drainage and tying that in because it's coming onto the site now, it's going to continue to come on the site, and we're just going to manage it into our catch basin. There were some pictures that have been submitted about the pavement at the beginning of the street, at 28. We're going to repair that. And there's also a drainage issue down there that we can correct while we're dealing with that. Just, it was supposed to flow off into the state land at the beginning of Broken Bow, and somehow that got silted up and blocked up and it puddles there. So we're going to open that up as well. We have a revised building elevation. So we've added different types of siding, window boxes. This is, I know it looks like brick, but it's cedar impression siding. And this planting plan coincides with the landscape buffering plan we're going to be submitting. So I think, I think that we've addressed all the areas where you were concerned last time, and we hope you like it a little better this time, and we'll take some questions.
Okay. I'm going to just make a quick statement. The town of Falmouth has reached safe harbor, which we stated at the opening of this application. This means the town has met the statutory requirements of the state. There is no record of any appeal in this case filed by the applicant. As such, the board may deny the comprehensive permit under 760 CMR 56.031 ABC, having followed the requirements under 760 CMR 56.038. So I'd like to ask my board members if anyone has any, any motions or any information or any questions, or anything. I'll start down this end.
I have a question. It's not so much to do with the project itself, but did I read that the sewer was going to be charged off as one sewer SEIU or whatever, sewer equivalent unit per 40,000 square feet? So this place, even though now proposed it has 12 units, it's only going to get charged for basically one and a half sewer equivalent units? Who came up with that math, if that's in fact the case? Because everybody on Mayor Vista with 7,200 square foot lots had to pay the full betterment. And I think that that math needs to be revisited for sure. And as far as the project itself, going to go a long way to get my, going to have to go a long way to get my vote.
Scott?
Could you just walk us through your thought process from changing from a rental project to a homeownership project? Why the change?
Well, we had to take out the D8 unit building. It dropped it down to 12 rental units. The numbers didn't really work. We couldn't make the minimum of 12% that mass housing likes to see for profit on the project. And also, as mentioned here, there was more of a desire for workforce housing than rental projects. So we thought we were meeting both of those requirements, meeting the financial requirements and the, what we thought was the board's requirement of, requirement requests or desire to have more of a workforce housing than rental housing.
Yeah, again, I guess my thoughts too. I'm struggling a little bit with the, with this project itself, but I'd like to hear from other board members too. I mean, I appreciate the changes that was directionally correct, but I prefer to hear from some of the other board members in the abutters too.
Sounds good. Frank, do you have anything yet?
Well, I kind of would have preferred rental because I think that's what the town has a greater need for, but I'm not necessarily opposed to homeownership on the project. But just to follow up on Mark's question, I think I would like to see us ask the zoning administrator to see if he can get an answer to Mark's question. It's something that's kind of important.
Jim?
So I reviewed the letter of January 8th from Broken Bow Residences asking for the change. I'm not very happy that this is now going from rental to homeownership for the benefit of the audience that they didn't know. When a 40B comes in, when it's rental units, all units get counted towards the subsidized housing inventory. When it's homeowner units, homeownership, it's only the actual affordable units. So we were going from the proposed addition of 16 units to the subsidized housing inventory in this town, now to four, or excuse me, to three. So that's a, that's a big problem for me. This is not a LIP. It doesn't address any of the issues that are raised in the town's, I should say, the LIP policy that the select board adopted, which I think is a, it's very instructive and I think it's very, it addresses the majority personally of issues that I have when I want to see future 40Bs now that we have discretion to say no or to condition things. There's lack of amenities on the proposal. I appreciate the reduction in units. I think that was appropriate. I'm glad to see that septic is going to be, or see that sewer is coming in in 2027. That addresses a significant issue for me personally. But given the lack of amenities, given the fact that this is abutting, you know, very close to 28, there needs to be some open space. There's nothing that is very close by that I think people would easily access. So if it's not on premises, so to speak, around the lot, it's, it's an issue. So I, I can't give support in this current, what's currently before the board. There's also, and as always, and I'm sure Mr. Petucci is going to issue the architectural issues of this project.
Tony?
I won't take up too much of the board's time. This because Mr. Morse, I think articulated all of my thoughts. I think you already know how I feel about the architectural style of this project. You've heard me many times on other projects about what I think about that. And I don't think I'm truly in favor of this particular project at this point, but I do agree completely, I do agree with Mr. Morse, and I'll just pass that on.
Nick?
Yeah, I agree with the board where I don't see much benefit to the town, our housing shortage for low, you know, low income housing, more benefit to the developer in not addressing some of the real needs of the town.
One other point, the missing middles. There's no, there's nothing addressing the missing middle here. There's no units for 100% AMI. You're just giving the minimum required 25%. If there was an increase, that would be something significant that I think that the board could hang its hat on, but you're just giving us the minimum that's required.
Anybody else down this end?
No.
No.
Anybody want to make a motion?
May I respond to some of this?
Certainly.
First of all, I think there is open space over here. This, this entire leaching field area is going to be abandoned, and that's, that is open space. Secondly, I think that there's just a, such a negative attitude towards this project. I think at this point, we may choose to just withdraw the application rather than have you deny it. So I think that's, that's the position we're going to take at this time. We'll go back, we'll, we'll respect your comments here tonight, we'll go back to the select board. We'll talk to them about a LIP, very opposed to going through, dealing with DHCD, been very, very bad experiences with them. I'd much rather stay with mass housing. The LIP sends us the DHCD. I'm going to ask the selectmen and the planning committee if they'll make a recommendation that will be a favorable recommendation, or we won't come back, of course, and that they'll let us go through mass housing, who's much more responsive, much easier to work with, and is much less on their plate. Not that they're bad people, they just have so much on their plate at EOHLC or whatever they call themselves now. Mass Housing's focused.
Just to be clear, Madam Chairman, there's an approvable project here. It's just not for me in the current configuration.
Yeah, so we'd like to, I don't know if you, we should withdraw, or you want to continue us further till we go back and meet that requirement of going through the selectmen? You tell me.
Madam Chairman, through you, if I may. Any denial is not, is without prejudice. It's not like a standard where they're precluded for two years, so, but I would...
So we can do it either way.
Withdrawal is without prejudice.
That too, as well.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
I think that's your best route.
What about further continuance or withdrawal?
Withdrawal.
Okay.
So we need a motion?
Or a request from the applicant.
Or a request from the applicant.
Request to withdraw the application at this time, with the right to come back with it after we've done a few other things.
Madam Chairman, at the request of the applicant, I'll make a motion to allow him to withdraw without prejudice.
Second?
We have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nick.
Thank you, sir.
All right, next, we have 17 Walker. And we have a request for continuance till January 23rd, correct?
Yeah.
On that date?
Move to continue to January 23 if the time meets our schedule.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second?
Second?
Yeah, 23rd, right?
Yes.
Yep. Any discussion? Any discussion down this end? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right, we're moving on now to West Falmouth Estates.
The zoning minister, the, for minutes, Madam Chairman, the recording secretary has asked for clarification. Who made the motion, second?
Frank made the motion.
Oh, Frank made the motion, Scott second.
Correct.
Right?
I do, Madam Chairman.
We're too fast down this end.
Yeah, speedy. All right, so we have West Falmouth Estates. We have a draft decision in front of us. Yes, we can start reading it. We'll take turns like we did last time, like a town meeting, and do holes, if that's okay with everybody? And everyone's read up till findings. We're not going to read the entire decision because it's pretty long. The beginning of the, of the document is all paperwork that's sent to us and various emails and, and then we go to findings.
You might just want to ask if anyone noticed any corrections on the procedural history.
Did anyone notice any questions on the procedural history? Does anyone have any questions on the procedural history?
I communicated a correction that's been made on the book and page with the title.
Yeah, that was underlined, yeah. I think that was the only one in that, right? Yeah. So I think we can move to findings. Yep. Is everybody on the right page? Are we, are we there?
Are we on page seven?
Jim's going to start reading. We'll try to split this up.
Findings, number one. According to the last published subsidized housing inventory, SHI issued by the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities, EOHLC dated January 1, 2024, prior to the submission of this application, the town of Falmouth had an 8.13% affordable housing. The town currently has an approved housing production plan, however, as of the date of filing, did not currently satisfy any of the statutory or regulatory exemption thresholds outlined in Mass General Law Chapter 40B and 780 CMR 56.00. Two, the applicant has met the requirements to file for a comprehensive permit. The applicant has won control of the land by recorded deed dated December 15, 2023. Two, the project has been issued a project eligibility letter from the Massachusetts Housing Finance Agency dated March 20, 2024. And three, the applicant proposes to create a limited dividend organization, reference 3202024 Mass Housing Letter. Number three, the subject site is located at 19 North Falmouth Highway, North Falmouth, Massachusetts, known as the premises, and is cited in the single residence B zoning district, the Wildlife Foraging Area 2, and the Search and Rescue Overlook Districts. There is 113 feet of street footage on North Falmouth Highway, a state right-of-way complying with a minimum 100-foot requirement per the zoning district. Premises comprised of 186,244 square feet, 4.27 acres, and a district requiring a minimum 40,000 square feet. The lot is conforming. Four, the westerly portion of the premises is cited in the West Falmouth Historical District and in an inventoried area. Five, the topography of the premises ranges from a low of 42 feet toward the west to 120 feet toward the east. The westerly third of the premises is relatively level with a relatively sharp slope up towards the east, meeting a southbound road layout for 28. The easterly two-thirds of the premises is largely wooded and is intended to be clearcut for the development. The premises was referred to as Rocky Moraine. Number six, immediate abutters comprise single-family dwellings, including some historical dwellings. Salt Pond Area Bird Sanctuaries, a nonprofit preserving open space wildlife habitat, owns a large parcel on the westerly side of North Falmouth Highway across from the premises. Seven, the premises is currently improved by a single-family dwelling circa 1925 plus a detached garage. Eight, the Town of Falmouth, Massachusetts Housing Production Plan, HPP, report dated March 2024 identifies the goal to add 80 new SHI-eligible affording housing units in a given calendar year. Nine, the proposed, proposal originally requested the grant of a comprehensive permit for the construction of 24 single-family dwellings comprising three bedrooms each, with the proposed density was 5.62 units per acre. The proposal was amended to be reduced to 16, excuse me, to 20 single-family homes with a density of 4.68 units per acre. Five of the dwelling units will be reserved as affordable for purchases earning 80% of less of the area median income as calculated by HUD, Housing and Urban Development, for Barnstable County. Ten, separate three-bedroom home designs are proposed, the sloop and the schooner. The schooner is proposed to be two stories with an open front porch and designed to be 27 feet 10 inches in height, per the plan submitted with the application dated 2/23/24. The dwelling is proposed to be 45 feet 6 inches in width by approximately 35 feet deep plus an additional rear bulkhead. There is an attached single-car garage. The first floor contains the master bedroom, and there are two bedrooms on the second floor plus storage and a sitting area. The schooner plans show a basement with a rear bulkhead. Lot 7 is proposed to be a partial slab on grade due to setback from the subsurface infiltration system. Lots 5, 6, 7, 9, 10, 12, 14, 18, and 19 are planned to accommodate this design. Two of the affordable units are proposed to be the schooner design. The sloop is also proposed to be two stories with an open front porch and designed to be 29 feet 9 inches in height, per the plan submitted with the application dated 2/23/24. The dwelling is designed to be 36 feet in width plus a bulkhead by 54 feet in length. A single-car garage is attached and a first-floor master bedroom is planned. The second floor contains two bedrooms plus a sitting area. A side bulkhead is planned plus a basement. Lots 1, 2, 3, 4, 8, 11, 13, 15, 16, and 17 are proposed to be the sloop design, including three of the affordable units. Lot 20 is not designated as a particular building design. The existing dwelling is proposed to be moved to this lot and expanded. No plans or dimensions were provided. Eleven, two parking spaces are provided on each lot plus three visitor spaces towards the easterly area, and three visitor parking spaces are provided towards the westerly area of the premises, resulting in 46 total parking spaces. No accessible parking spaces appear to be designated. Twelve, lot, lot sizes for dwellings range from 4,444 square feet, lot 20, to 11,378 square feet, lot 12. Number 13, the lots, two at the east and one at the west, are designated for common septic area or drainage. These lots do not contain a designation as non-buildable. The northwest lot, comprising 10,495 square feet, is proposed for common septic area, guest parking, and the mail station. The southwest lot contains 9,450 square feet of area and is proposed for drainage. The easterly lot comprises 13,180 square feet of area designated to be a common septic area. Number 14, lot widths range from 47 feet, lot 20, to 79 feet, lot 14. Fifteen, units are proposed to be cited a minimum of 15 feet from the, the project driveway, a minimum of seven feet from side lot lines, and a minimum of 10 feet from a rear lot line per the 121724 Plan Sheet 3 of 8. Number 16, retaining walls are proposed between lots 5, 6, 7, 8, 16, 17, 18, and 19 to be three feet above the proposed adjacent grade. The width of the walls were not dimensioned but will impact the access width of the side yards. Retaining walls are also proposed on lot 14 at 9 feet 15, 8 feet, and lot 13 at 7 feet. Such walls will be subject to review by the building commissioner. Retaining walls on lot 14 and 15 are proposed to be cited stepped into the rear of the lot, limiting access to the southerly portion of the lots. Number 17, board members raised concern about the final side yard width on lots between dwelling and retaining wall relative to the ability to access the rear dwellings, particularly in the event that a repair or upgrade was required for a septic system cited in the rear yard. A representative for the applicant provided testimony to indicate that a crane could be utilized to lift the structure over an existing dwelling. According to the proposed lot table on Sheet 3 of 8, revision dated 121724, the lot width for the narrowest lot proposed for a schooner design, lot 9, is 58 feet. Subtracting the width of the schooner design results in approximately 6.25 feet for the side yard, not including the width of a retaining wall. Similarly, the three lots with the most narrow width for the sloop design, lots 3, 15, and 17, all at 49 feet of width, would have less than the proposed 7-foot side yard, given the width of the dwelling plus the additional width of the bulkhead, which appeared not to be included. Eighteen, lot coverage by structures range from 12% on lot 12 to 35% lot 20. The as-of-right limit per the bylaw is 20%. The 121724 Plan notes specifically excluded any future additional structure or change such as the shed or deck in lot coverage. Any such change would increase the lot coverage reported for the lot above the reported lot coverage. Number 19, lot coverage by structures parking paving ranges from 20% lot 14 to 45% lot 11. The as-of-right limit per the bylaw is 40%. The Plan notes specifically excluded any additional structure or patio not shown on the plan and not included in the drainage calculations. Homeowner Association documents should identify this limitation, noting additional impervious area may negatively impact planned stormwater management and drainage. Twenty, the development shall be accessed by a private driveway maintained by the Homeowners Association, which shall remain private and shall not qualify to be accepted by the town as a way due to the lack of compliance with town road standards. The proposed exterior lighting is at doorways, which shall be dark sky compliant and not shed illumination off-site. Lighting needs to be added to the final site plan to illuminate the sidewalk. Site lighting to be maintained by the Homeowners Association. Twenty-one, the affordable units have been identified as lot 1, 4, 10, 15, and 19, subject to final approval by the state.
Ma?
It's a hold. No, no, I'm fine. Twenty-two, the water superintendent provided a referral requiring the water main and a hydrant at the end of the development as shown on plans, including a final as-built plan. The applicant shall provide an easement for the water main extension in a form approved by the town. The tap and sleeve assemblies will be inspected by the town, including pressure testing, chlorination, and sampling. Twenty-three, town engineering provided a detailed referral comprising seven pages, including a request for a peer engineer to conduct a detailed review of the materials submitted to include sewage, water, fire protection, parking and access, grading and drainage, and subdivision plan sheets. Twenty-four, the 121724 Plan Sheet 4 of 8 reports 31,626 cubic yards of cut, 16,992 cubic yards of fill, with a net cut of 14,634 cubic yards. Twenty-five, drainage easements are proposed on lots 7 and 16. No roof drains are shown on those lots. Twenty-six, the Affordable Housing Committee provided a referral noting the need for affordable units and inquiring about additional units being affordable beyond the 20 units and inquiring about additional units being affordable beyond the 25% minimum. The committee suggested installation of innovative alternative IA septic systems to be installed, now to reduce nitrogen rather than waiting until it is required, to lessen the financial burden of a future upgrade, particularly for affordable owners. The committee also noted that plans lacked sheds, which is an amenity sought by homeowners. Twenty-seven, the Falmouth Historical Commission recommended demolition of the existing dwelling rather than renovating. The commission recommended that the design for Lot 20 instead be a sloop design, and that all of the siding be white cedar shingles to weather on all elevations, as opposed to clambered or bored and battened. Lastly, the commission encouraged that the area over the proposed leaching field be planted with natural wildflowers. Twenty-eight, the Board of Health agent emailed noted that the premises is not in a nitrogen-sensitive area, coastal pond overlay district, Zone 2, or Water Resource Protection District. The agent reported that the original 72 bedrooms, subsequently reduced to 60 bedrooms, is below the threshold for a groundwater discharge permit and would be under Title V regulations, with the authority being the Board of Health. The agent identified that a fully formed septic design was not provided, so there was no final comment on health permitting the design as shown, noting further engineering and soil evaluations outstanding. The town is currently engaged in watershed planning and permitting with the DEP. Twenty-nine, the Falmouth Fire Rescue Department noted the number and location of hydrants was adequate, as was the travel paths for fire apparatus. The hydrants will need to be installed and flow-tested before vertical construction is started. Thirty, assessing noted that the subdivision plan will require addresses to be assigned by the engineering department, and that the plan be recorded at the Registry of Deeds. Thirty-one, the planning referral expressly concerned about density and a lack of place space. Preference was expressed for all units to share the septic system and the system be denitrifying IA. It was noted that the elevation of the driveway was a challenge to collect stormwater, and that it appeared that the grade would overwhelm the drainage system. Planning noted that the length of the roadway exceeds the subdivision allowance. It was identified that the development is not in close proximity to retail or commercial businesses, and that there was a concern about noise proximate to Route 28. Planning suggested electric car charging be available. Thirty-two, the housing coordinator noted that the development on North Falmouth Highway contains no sidewalks, bike lanes, or a fixed bus route. Thirty-three, a representative for the developer who installs septic systems reported that if the installed septic systems were required to be upgraded to IA or repair slash replace that the tank could be lifted over the dwelling by crane, given the lack of side yard space. Rear yard septic systems are proposed for lots five, six, seven, 12, 16, and 18. Thirty-four, shared soil absorption systems are proposed at the westerly area of the premises, as well as within the cul-de-sac and additional area at the easterly area of the premises. Thirty-five, mailbox placement is planned to be on the northerly side at the entrance of the development, proximate to some parking spaces. No bus shelter was shown on the plan. No specific play area was identified on the 121724 Plans. Thirty-six, decks dimension 10 feet by 10 feet are shown on the rear of lots five, six, seven, 12, 14, 18, and 19. The 121724 Plan contains a notation that patios, decks, sheds, and/or screened porches may be added to each lot. It is not known if these additional structures were added into the lot coverage by structure or lot coverage or by structure, parking, paving percentages provided, and whether those additions would exceed requested waivers. The decks are not shown on the architectural plan submitted. Optional real patios and front landings are shown on the landscape plan, but not included on the 121724 site plan. Thirty-seven, the town provides trash and recycle pickup and snow removal for residents on private roads. The town will not remove snow from the sidewalk due to the narrow width proposed. Thirty-eight, lots 11, 12, and 13 require lots 11, 12, and 13 require an access easement for the shared driveway entrance on Lot 11. Thirty-nine, the proposal does not comply with certain zoning bylaw provisions. As provided in Chapter 40B, the applicant has requested waivers from specific provisions, identified as exceptions dated November 15th, 2024, prepared by Atlantic Design Engineers, each of which the Zoning Board of Appeals must separately vote on. Forty, the Zoning Board of Appeals engaged a peer engineer to review the engineering submissions. The peer engineer appeared before the board and expressed concern about the road layout, noting that there was no construction tolerance provided. He noted that while it worked on paper, in practicality, it was nearly impossible to get everything perfect. Extending beyond the layout could result in the roadway being on a residential lot. The peer expressed that the grade of the road was at the maximum slope, and that if it was even slightly off, it would be non-compliant. He stated that it was not best practice, and as an example suggested that the plan should target an 8% slope, where then it might result in a 9% grade. He reported that it was typical. The design to provide a tolerance exceeding 10% grade would require the roadway being redone. Reducing the slope would require removal of more material. The peer reported a quantity of material to be removed, estimating 700 round-trip truckloads over two-week period. The peer noted that the applicant was willing to retrofit for future IA systems. However, the small lots lack sufficient maneuvering side yard space, making a retrofit difficult after construction. The peer reported that a meeting would be required regarding clearing trees in the existing roadway layout. The peer addressed snow storage planned at the easterly area of the premises, noting that melting snow would melt and flow down the roadway of the project. The level of groundwater was not identified. The peer reported that the development would have to be ADA compliant, and that full final details, once produced, would require review. The peer opined that many development concerns, including approximately half of the waivers, would be eliminated or reduced if the development proposal was reduced. Forty-one, the abutters to the proposal express the following concerns: density, reduction sought, out of character with the historical identity of the neighborhood, traffic, including home deliveries, stormwater and drainage, given the topography, rocky soil, and small lots, clear-cutting forested area affecting the balance of nature and affordable housing, noise in proximity to abutters, tree waiver, location of entrance and impact of car headlights, increase in affordable units beyond the minimum, septic system density, denitrification system sought to maintain water quality, reduce nitrogen to sensitive downstream resources, impaired water bodies, imposition on shared lot lines, negative impacts to abutters.
So we should go back and address the hold? Okay?
Let me find it and see what I was thinking. Retaining walls. Yes, I question, the retaining walls shall be subject to review by the Building Commissioner. Does he review them or approve them?
So both. I believe that any retaining walls over four feet in height may require engineering, so he would require those specific details prior to
I think we should use the stronger word. Review, to me, means just take a look at it. Approve means you have to comply with the requirements.
So right, review and approve?
Yeah.
Subs be subject to review and approval by the Building Commissioner. Is that okay with everybody? Everybody's on board?
Yep.
Should we vote?
Vote by unanimous consent.
Got it.
Before we get to 21, I think I had a note next to 20, and what was missing on that section was that there are four pole lights that are proposed to be spaced through the development, so I would just recommend adding that line.
Like streetlights?
Yes.
Streetlights?
Yes.
Okay, so we're ready to get that one, right?
Yep.
Okay, and then the 21? You're all set with 20, Louie?
Yes.
So 21 is Mark?
Yeah. The discussion of the retrofit and the inability for the units at the top of the hill to be retrofitted, and the concern for the affordable units. And, you know, we, this was a protracted hearing, but upon leaving, I was considering that. And these 40Bs are supposed to be designed with equality in mind, where nobody perceives, you're not supposed to have to tell the affordable unit from the regular units. Obviously, here, the best units are going to be at the top of the hill, with perhaps even a potential for an ocean view. And I think not designating one of those, I shall call them premier spots for affordable housing, obviously. I mean, it's, you know, I mean, we've learned along the way from our lessons, like, I don't know if I remember it from Cabrini or even Chicago, but basically, building affordable housing altogether has proven sometimes to be a bad idea, and I just have a problem with not having an affordable unit part of those lots at the top of the hill.
I think that's a condition, not a finding.
Yeah, we can move that to conditions.
We can put that in the condition.
Then it becomes how that's going to work.
Well, this is a finding. It says the affordable units have been identified. They do the identification. And that's a finding, but we have, we impose the conditions.
Do we want to amend the language, say the affordable units are proposed as Lot 1, 4, 10, 15, and 19?
Might be better.
Yeah, we can deal with it later.
So we'll take out identified and put in proposed. Okay, and then what do we have next?
37 is the next one I have.
What one?
37.
Me too.
Yeah, it's you.
Again, we talk about a, we refer to a private road. I think we're discussing a driveway, isn't it?
I think that should just be omitted.
Well, but also, the way I saw it, they're not even going to provide trash because it's a driveway.
Or snow removal. So that thing shouldn't be there at all.
I did miss this, but what I was going to suggest was that it could instead read the town and then it cert does not
Does not provide.
Write snow for residents on private driveways, and that further the town does not remove snow from the internal sidewalk. In that way, leave it as perhaps amended.
And you don't have to renumber everything.
Didn't the town
She's just changing it to the town does not.
Yeah, but you don't have to renumber it by
Right. Oh, you don't have to remember. Got it, okay.
And what about the private, the road to driveway? Is that changing?
Uh, yeah, so if the word road would be struck and put in driveway.
Yeah, we change it to driveway.
Did it not say that the town was not going to plow the road?
Yeah.
So there was some confusion through the process regarding the town's role, and there was concern expressed by town engineering about the narrow width of the roadway. And part of their concern involved the town vehicle trying to access the driveway at the same time as a resident potentially being on the same driveway. Given the width of town vehicles, there was a concern that there may not be room for both vehicles at the same time. So I think the town looked at the fact that the proposal was not complying with the minimum width requirements that the town sought. So they opted to view it as a private driveway, because the other part of their problem is they say when they're doing recycle pickup, if somebody's parked in that roadway, the town vehicle cannot access the recycle material, because it can't, has to get right up next to the containers. And that furthermore, if they have to plow, and there's someone parked in that way, that vehicle gets plowed in. So the option on their part was that we instead consider this to be a private driveway.
All right. I didn't read this till late last night, actually early this morning, so I could be wrong, but did it not say that the town was not going to pick up trash or plow? So why is this even in here?
Well, the town originally proposed that if it was a private road, that they would plow, and they would do trash pickup. However, their stance changed when they looked at the width of the road, and they made the determination that they would not be able to comply. So there was a change in their original referral and their final determination.
So why does this not say the town will not remove snow from the sidewalk or road?
Yep, we can certainly word it that way.
I would, I would say from the driveway.
Yeah, driveway, yeah.
Driveway, right.
Offering a friendly amendment.
Everybody's all set on that one?
Mm-hmm.
And then Frank is 40.
40.
Well, I have the same issue there. We've got the word road and roadway throughout this paragraph. It should be driveway wherever it appears.
In 40, it's
Yeah.
Right, I think the problem there was that when, in the second, second line, we're talking about the road, they did express concern about the road layout. So there's some fluctuation in verbiage here, where they were looking at it originally as a road, so.
Maybe just call it a way then.
Yeah, yeah, I guess.
Road layout slash driveway layout, road or driveway layout?
Yeah, yeah. We could just say driveway layout.
Do you think that's it, right? Is that it for finding?
That's the finding.
Keep going. Well, I don't know if you want to do that.
I keep going, I mean, I keep reading.
Yeah.
On the decision.
Let him do it.
Yeah.
True. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Zoning Board of Appeals, here referred to as the Board, being of the opinion of four said and acting under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, and 760 CMR 56.00, following a motion made by, and seconded by, voted blank to blank to grant or deny a comprehensive permit with conditions for the construction of 20 home ownership, three-bedroom dwellings, five of which shall be affordable in perpetuity to households whose income is not more than 80% of area median income as determined by the Housing and Urban Development, EOHLC, at 19 North Falmouth Highway, North Falmouth, Massachusetts, assessors map 15, Section 3, Parcel 5, Lot 000, known as the premises. This comprehensive permit shall be subject to the following conditions. And then based on input from the Board, Option B, the development shall be reduced by either four or eight units, given the comments from peer engineer about no room for error, and to increase open space amenities allow for access to all septic systems, and without requiring a crane, and provide for sufficient space for IA systems.
Oh, can you hold them up?
Oh, I figured.
Well, I think we have to, there's no hold. We just talked about it now.
We just talked about it?
Yeah. I'd like to start.
My, my question on that is simply goes around, why is it either four or eight? Why is it four or up to eight? Is it, is there a specific for four or eight, and not five or six?
Because the 25% math.
Well, I don't understand why that
Can't have a half an affordable unit.
Well,
Well, you could. Just reduce it to the lowest denominator.
Well, it actually rounds up, but, so, it wouldn't be necessary for them to reduce by, say, four, if you sought a reduction, but what would happen is they would have to give an additional affordable unit. So if they reduce by three, they're still required to give one affordable unit per
So does Option B, at this point, is this where we would actually state what that condition that is for?
Through you, Madam Chairman, the Board has the power to approve the number of units, or reduce the number of units, or so on. So it's a Board decision whether or not they want to go at 20, or they want to reduce to 16, to 12.
So
To four, you know, entirely up to the Board.
Through you, Madam, to our zoning administrator. Reading further on to this, is there a section that we're going to hit where it says the number of units?
So the number of units that were placed within this draft are consistent with the original application.
Of 20.
Right. So if you make a change here So if you make a change here, the rest of the decision would have to be amended to match.
It would be one less affordable unit. Am I correct?
Is that something we're going to be able to do tonight or is this something?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, you have limited time, so I think you really have to make a determination about what you're voting on tonight.
So is this going to be a board discussion as to four or eight?
Right now, yeah.
Or as is.
Or as is.
Or as is, yeah.
I mean, I'm, am I still on?
Yes.
I'm going to recommend at least four.
Yeah.
To bring it into compliance with what a unit ratio would be just down the street from this.
Yeah.
I mean, that's about a, well, I have the numbers, but it would match the unit ratio if we reduced it by four to what was down the street at two thirteen.
And Noreen, maybe you could explain what it does for the waivers.
Right, so, you know, the peer did explain that there were a number of waivers and that they felt that if there was a reduction and therefore, um, those following circumstances, there would be fewer waivers required. So for example, where this is now identified as a private driveway, the waivers that are typed in here are all the waivers that the developer asked for. So there will be amendments to the waivers or you can vote them based on the fact that they would be no longer asking for a waiver per se for a road because it's now a private driveway. But, yeah, so again, the draft reflects the number of units that the applicant requested. So if you amend the number that you're granting, you know, you would then say, you know, based on this reduction, the plans would have to be revised, et cetera.
It also would have a positive effect on the road width. It would bring the sidewalks into compliance. It would make the units, provided they were done properly, it would make the units on the top of the hill accessible in the event of I A systems. I mean, as the peer engineer said, effectively, it would probably halve these waiver requests and make a less dense project. My, my opinion was that these things, if you ever driven down the road to Wild Harbor Estates, it works very well with those duplexes. And I think it's quite tasteful and the same thing could have been done here.
We have a, uh, down the street at two thirteen North Falmouth Highway, you have a unit to acre ratio of three point four three three. And here at North Falmouth, nineteen North Falmouth Highway, we, it's currently at a ratio with twenty units of four point six eight four. If you applied the same unit to acre ratio of three point four three three, that actually brings it to fifteen, so round it back up to sixteen and make it, uh, in parity with.
Very comparable.
Very comparable. It seems to make sense. I believe that we are not allowed to say which lots would be removed. That's something the applicant would have to determine about with a revised plan.
Yep.
But they would most potentially be all shuffled. Oh, yeah, which lot, but I mean, then, then.
Square footage gets moved.
Yeah, it would reshuffle the deck, so to speak.
Well, it would make sense to look at, I mean, we can't say which ones they are, but a quick look at it that I did was there are certain lots that should be removed and we can't tell them what to do that would provide about sixty-seven lineal feet and then if you put that back someplace else, again, we can't tell them what to do, uh, you could spread the lots out and you'd get more space between the house and the side lots, especially in those lots where you have those retaining walls. And, you know, those retaining walls can lean back and make it even more difficult.
They also eliminate the need for a shared driveway for the.
Exactly.
Units up at the top, so to speak.
The thing for me is with this, it eliminates the crane. People can actually get to their backyard.
I think it addresses in addition, Madam Chairman, I think a lot of the concerns that the board had, not just what the peer has raised, but as to density and several other issues, so.
Yeah. Frank, you have any opinion on this?
Well, I made a comment, I think at the very first hearing, that I thought they were jamming some of these units in the project. I still feel that way, so I changed my mind on that.
Are you advocating for eight?
No, no, I'm not advocating for eight.
I think it's a good idea myself. Scott, do you have anything?
I support the, uh, the reduction of four units, absolutely.
And Nick?
Support the reduction.
Should we vote on option B? I think we should.
Well, no, we vote.
I think I've, I can read what I think it would now be unless somebody needs to wordsmith it a little more.
Yeah, and then we can go ahead and.
Do conditions.
Do conditions.
So now therefore be it resolved that the zoning board of appeals herein referred to as the board being of the opinion of four said and acting under the provisions of Massachusetts' general law, chapter forty B, sections twenty to twenty-three and seven sixty C M R fifty-six point zero zero, following a motion made by blank and seconded by blank, voted blank to blank to grant the comprehensive permit with conditions for the construction of sixteen home ownership three-bedroom dwellings, four of which shall be affordable in perpetuity to households whose income is not more than eighty percent of the area median income as determined by HUD and E O H L C at nineteen North Falmouth Highway, North Falmouth, Massachusetts, successors map fifteen, section three, parcel zero zero five, lot zero zero zero, the premises. This comprehensive permit shall be subject to the following conditions.
Well, second that change.
I was just reading.
We don't vote on it now.
I'll see, I can still second. Okay, so now we move to conditions?
Do we have the change recorded?
Yes.
Uh, conditions, general, G one.
Do you want to keep going?
I'm good.
Okay.
I'll let you know when I'm not.
Yep.
Where this comprehensive permit is made specifically under Mass General Law, chapter forty B, section twenty, sections twenty to twenty-three, allowing the override of local zoning density, there shall be no as of right changes made to the subject property. Any changes requested shall be properly submitted to the zoning board of appeals as provided for under Mass General Law, chapter forty B and seven sixty C M R fifty-six.
Now, do we need to amend these? Because there will be a change, maybe.
I would suggest, Madam Chairman, that we amend as we go.
Okay.
And do we need to vote these right now?
Right now.
I mean, you can, you can vote per or you can vote as a whole. I think it's just identifying that you're specifically voting.
Hold, vote the whole thing except the holds.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
The construction shall be substantially as shown on the plans submitted to and reviewed by the board as follow, with the exception of further conditions requiring amended or detailed plans.
Now, they're going to want change.
Yeah, recommend here is that you would have to say that the construction shall be substantially shown on a revised plan to be submitted, right?
Yes.
So, yeah, um, I guess the question is, how do you refer to the, the plans that are captured there or the plans that were submitted?
You mean on the G one?
Uh, two.
Two.
G two.
Yeah.
I guess you would just say the following plans are what was originally submitted, so you're, you're recommending that those are the ones that are to be revised.
Mm-hmm, right. Okay.
Shall I continue with the second bullet point?
Yeah.
The sloop elevation sheet one of eight, the sloop first slash second floor plans, sheet two of eight, the sloop foundation plan, sheet three of three, plans are dated February twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four. The schooner elevation sheet one of eight, the schooner first slash second floor plans, framing sheet eight, the schooner foundation slash framing sheet three of eight, the schooner cross-section sheet four of eight, the schooner cross-section sheet five of eight, the schooner eve detail sheet six of eight, the schooner sheer wall elevation sheet seven of eight, the schooner nailing schedule sheet eight of eight. All plans are dated February twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, prepared for West Falmouth Estates, North Falmouth Highway Route twenty-eight, West Falmouth, Mass. As shown by J B Designs, P O Box two ninety-three, West Barnstable, Mass. Plans are not stamped or signed. Landscape submission plans, sheet L one point zero, dated January third, twenty twenty-four, with a final revision date November twenty-one, twenty twenty-four. Typical building planting plan, sheet L one point one, dated January third, twenty twenty-four. Excuse me? The final revision date of October nine, twenty twenty-four, prepared for West Falmouth Estates, L L C, West Falmouth, Mass, as drawn by Hawk Design Incorporated, Sagamore, Mass. Plans are not stamped and signed. The October ninth, twenty twenty-four landscape plan incorrectly listed House Designs as Concord and Wellesley. Lighting specifications and design specialist plan is not dated. Board date received stamp of November twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, prepared for Falmouth Estates, prepared by Travis Bliskey. If I got that wrong, I apologize. No address provided. G three, the applicant stated that there would be no blasting during construction. Should there be such a change, the applicant shall comply with any applicable town requirements, building, fire, engineering related to blast protocol, including a pre-blast survey and notice to a butters.
I'm holding.
G four, all stormwater from the premises shall be directed to recharge on the premises. The stormwater systems shall be operated and maintained privately per the approved operation and maintenance O and M plan in perpetuity. All required reports, inspections and checklists shall be submitted per the O and M plan in perpetuity to town engineering. All requirements shall be contained within the H O A documents. Any change in responsibility of the stormwater management system shall be reported to town engineering. Compliance to the town's stormwater management rules and regulations shall be peer reviewed.
That, that should be added, that there'll be attached as appendix A, is that correct? Ashley, did you give, give us those this morning, this afternoon, for, and they're to be attached?
Okay. Everyone's got that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Uh, G five, the private driveway shall remain forever private. Trash, recycling and snow plowing shall be private, referenced in the homeowner documents. Details on maintenance of the driveway shall be included in the homeowner documents. The homeowners shall be responsible for snow removal from the project sidewalk and individual driveways. G six, parking or storage of any unregistered vehicles or boats on the premises is strictly prohibited. This shall be included in the homeowner documents. G seven, the applicant shall provide handicap parking as may be required by the building commissioner. G eight, any deviation, no matter how minor, from plans submitted and approved shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals for approval prior to implementation of said change. The zoning administrator may make a determination as to whether the changes are minor in nature and can be approved administratively or whether they will require a public hearing for an amendment. Changes made prior to an approval shall be subject to a full hearing and are at risk that the zoning board of appeals may deny the request, subjecting any unimproved construction to be ordered undone. G nine, this comprehensive permit shall be a master permit which shall subsume all local permits and approvals normally issued by local boards, other than as specifically enumerated in a condition. The Board of Health and Conservation Commission are excluded from this provision. The applicant shall be required to comply with any Board of Health or Conservation Commission requirements at the application for a building permit. G ten, this permit shall not take effect until a copy of the decision bearing the certification of the town clerk that twenty days has elapsed after the decision has been filed in the office of the town clerk with no appeal being filed, is recorded in the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, or that an appeal has been filed within such time. Any person exercising rights under a duly appealed comprehensive permit does so at risk that a court may reverse the permit and that any construction performed under the permit may be ordered undone. G eleven, this permit shall lapse three years from the date on which the decision is filed in the town clerk's office. If a substantial use of the comprehensive permit has not sooner commenced, except for good cause, as determined by the zoning board of appeals. G twelve, this comprehensive permit shall not be transferred without express written approval of the zoning board of appeals in accordance with seven sixty C M R fifty-six. G thirteen, each condition in this decision shall run with the land and shall, in accordance with its terms, be applicable to and binding on the applicant and the applicant's successors and assigns. G fourteen, the maximum height of the dwelling shall not exceed thirty feet. G fifteen, construction hours shall be limited to seven A M. to seven P M. Monday through Friday. Saturday hours shall be limited to eight A M. to four P M. No Sunday or town-observed holiday hours, absent an emergency. All construction vehicles shown strictly on the subject property and not park on abutting streets. Construction vehicles are prohibited from idling on or near the premises outside of construction hours. During construction, efforts shall be undertaken to minimize impacts on a butters, including securing dumpsters, stabilizing soil to guard against erosion from a rain event and ensuring that public roadways are kept clean. Noncompliance shall be subject to enforcement. The applicant, the applicant shall meet with the D P W designee to determine the route for vehicles removing material. The applicant shall comply with D P W requirements, which may also include roadway sweeping, specified hours or other determined mandates.
I'm holding, only because I want dust control also?
All fifteen, G fifteen?
Yes.
G sixteen, the development shall be limited to a maximum of, like, twenty sixteen, single-family dwellings with a maximum of three bedrooms each, total development maximum forty-eight bed, uh, forty-eight, yeah, forty-eight bedrooms. Four of the dwellings shall remain affordable in perpetuity to eligible purchasers whose annual income shall not exceed eighty percent of the area median income as determined by the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development. The four affordable dwellings shall be eligible for inclusion in the town's subsidized housing inventory, S H I, maintained by the Office of Housing and Livable Communities, E O H L C. Any increase in the number of bedrooms is a violation of the zoning bylaw and this comprehensive permit. The applicant shall work with the housing coordinator to provide information related to the inclusion of the dwellings on the town's S H I. G seventeen, the dwelling units shall include a first-floor bedroom and a bathroom with a minimum thirty-two inch doorway width. Developers shall make units handicapped accessible on request of the buyer. G eighteen, there shall be no further division or subdivision of the premises or the creation of additional housing units or any other structures without further approval of the zoning board of appeals in the form of an amendment to this decision. G nineteen, to the extent permitted by law, preference for the sale of seventy percent, should this now be fractional?
Two.
Two. Two of four, in this case, of affordable dwellings, which is not good math, shall be given to home buyers that are Falmouth residents, employees of the town, employed within the town, or who have children attending town schools. The applicant shall work with the housing coordinator to communicate with the state and shall provide the required lottery information for the affordable units.
And wait a minute. Um, three out of four would be seventy-five percent. It's a hell of a lot closer than the fifty percent you're offering.
I don't think you.
I would say that you would.
That's all we can do.
I don't think you can go over, though. I think seventy percent is the max that the state allows, but even then, you have to petition the state to allow that and they don't have to grant it, but it's a value to request it because part of the effort of Falmouth putting its land into use as affordable housing should be to help Falmouth residents as well.
So should we try for it?
Well, I don't think you can exceed seventy. That's why I think two of four.
You're not positive.
May I, can I just propose that there, if you read, to the extent permitted by law, preference for the sale of affordable dwellings shall be given to home buyers that are Falmouth residents, just, just to the extent maximal by law.
That works for me, yeah.
That's fine.
Because there'll be somebody out there working that for sure, Kim or whoever. I would hope.
Put a period after Falmouth residents?
To the extent permitted by law, preference for the sale of affordable dwellings shall be given to home buyers that are Falmouth residents, employees of the town, employed within the town, or who have children attending town schools.
That's fine.
You want to change your frame? It's okay like this?
I just want to make sure I understand what he's saying.
I'm just, we're just eliminating the percentage because it's not keeping, seventy percent is not three of five, it's, and now we're, now we're not at five or at four. We're just saying to the extent, I think the intention is pretty clear. We want.
Unless you want to say up to seventy percent, but yeah, the same thing, yeah, it's fine.
Board decision, I think. I think it's pretty clear. We want local preference.
Yes.
Anything else, any other changes?
No.
Uh, G twenty, the four affordable year-round, not seasonal family ownership dwellings shall be included in the subsidized housing inventory, shall be subject to a regulatory agreement Fair Marketing and Income Guidelines. The affordable units shall not be rented or sublet and shall be included in the homeowner's documents. Certification of compliance with affordable housing regulations shall be submitted after the sale to the zoning board of appeals, Z B A, and Falmouth Housing Coordinator. the sale to the zoning board of appeals, ZBA, and Falmouth housing coordinator. This certification shall include documentation that each affordable ownership unit is occupied by a qualified owner as their primary residence. Homeownership association fees shall be adjusted to be reduced for the affordable units. The affordable units shall retain equal voting rights in any homeowner's association. The affordable units shall remain affordable in perpetuity with a use restriction recorded in the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds, a copy to the zoning board of appeals and the housing coordinator, and shall survive sale, foreclosure, or bankruptcy. Any resale of an affordable unit shall be properly managed by an affordable housing specialist and reported in advance to the zoning board of appeals and the town housing coordinator, and shall include the fact that any future owner is subject to all terms and conditions listed hereon, as provided in the homeowner documents. Option B. IA septic systems shall be installed for all the affordable units to avoid a substantial unanticipated, and then there should be some other word there, betterment?
Expense.
Or expense. Do you want to discuss this, Madam Chairman?
Tony, you want to start off?
Let me just read it aloud again. IA septic systems shall be installed for all the affordable units to avoid substantial unanticipated expense for those units?
Or unanticipated upgrading expenses at a future date, really, is what you're talking about.
Yeah. At a future date, that's.
One of the other issues that.
Future expense would be more concise.
One of the other issues that comes up with IA systems is the first three to four years of servicing. And we've already experienced where an escrow account can be set up for those anywhere from one to four years for the operation and management service systems. I don't know if the board would be interested in putting that in as well, or just leaving it at this.
Say it again, Tony.
So the first year to four years are expensive with regard to operation and management of these systems. And the thought I have is that some of that should be escrowed for the first, either year to the fourth year, first to second year, so that for those folks in the affordable units, they don't incur the expenses for operation and management, at least in the beginning. After that, it's theirs.
So would that be something that would be added to the homeowner association documents that would provide for this to be set up?
Is, are the, well, I guess it depends if the septic systems are part of the HOA.
Well, they're going to have to be in the instance of the shared systems. It's going to get very confusing.
It's going to get very confusing. You're right.
This should just be funded by the homeowners association. Because that's what's going to happen in the future, because you got shared systems, and that's not our, well, I guess it is ours to manage.
Well, I suppose you could have it put in the HOA, the condo docs, that they have to collect X amount of money every month with the condo fees that would pay for the operation and management of either one to four years, or one year or two years, the first two years of the affordable unit IA systems. Or we don't do anything at all.
Although they may want to have something in general anyway, because, you know, at some point in time, those units may require repair, replace, upgrade, whatever else it is. So they may have to have some type of septic fund.
For common area ones.
For, right. So maybe they just need to include something for all the units here.
Well, if you did an escrow account, and then it did get to the point where they were all done, they could just refund the escrow account back and, you know, go to their agreed homeowner association. It's kind of difficult.
I don't want to make it overly complex, because I don't know which, with the potential shuffle of where affordable units will be, again, we don't know where that'll come down to now. It goes from five to four. I'm not sure how to do this. I wish I could be clear on exactly how to do this.
Also, the state does have final say on where the affordable units are.
So maybe it has to do with the affordable units where there is private septic.
That wouldn't be fair, because they're all the same designs. That would certainly simplify things.
What about the HOA will be responsible for the upkeep and maintenance for IA systems for the first two years?
That simplifies it.
That's probably as simple as we're going to get.
Yeah.
You can do that one, Frank?
Yeah.
Do you know?
That's if we vote for the IA.
I think if we vote for the IA, but we've got to talk.
I'm a little hesitant to do the IA now that we have room.
That was going to be the question I've got, is do we, I mean, we're reducing the number of units. It's addressing a lot of the things. Do we?
Oh, and then we're going to have to address the fact that the affordable units, somebody's going to have to pay for them at some point in time. So that would have to be an escrow.
I mean, the other part, too, is that these regulations are ongoing with changes with the Board of Health. And this development, as well as any other in Falmouth, is going to be subject to whatever the rules and regulations are with the Board of Health at the time of a building permit being pulled. So if you don't provide for an IA, which is entirely possible, they may still be subject to that as of the date that they may pull a building permit, if that's what the Board of Health requires at that time.
Could we condition, again, if the board has appetite to do this, not to require an IA, but put a condition that if the Board of Health requires an IA, then that the HOA is going to have to pay for the maintenance or the testing and upkeep for the first two years?
Who's going to pay for the system?
Isn't this getting kind of out of our legal a little bit? Because the Board of Health is very concerned about the impact of a decision that they make to require people to put in IA systems. They know it's going to cost a lot of money. They're talking about how to soften the impact on homeowners. I think this is something they're going to work out, and probably they're going to spend weeks and months trying to do it rather than 15 minutes here.
Yeah, but we're obligated to protect the affordable units, and I mean.
We're only obligated to provide them. And we're providing affordable units. Once they're provided, it's their responsibility to handle it. So this is what I think.
If that's the case.
The homeowners.
The homeowners that we put into this unit is going to get.
Well, that's, you know, law's imperfect, I guess, in that respect.
How about a disclosure?
I have to disagree with that. I think it's our obligation.
What about a disclosure to a potential buyer, an affordable unit buyer, that septic regulations are in flux and that there might be, putting them on notice that there could be, if they buy it, a substantial cost down the road?
That can hurt.
That's going to be no insurance when and if it happens. Because, I mean, they probably can afford to barely buy this thing as it is. That'll be enough to.
I'm just hoping that the Board of Health is going to be.
Displace them.
I'm hoping that as the Board of Health rolls out these regulations changing or requiring IA systems, because it's going to happen, I think, town-wide eventually, that they're going to be giving affordable units or affordable housing projects a little bit more leeway to.
They have to. There's no alternative to that.
In the form of either variances or other things. Given the reduction in units, I was hard-charging on the IA issue with the affordable units, but I'm softening right now.
I think I have to agree with Mr. Morris that, at this point, it's becoming too complex. We have a Board of Health that evidently is very close to making some decisions as to when these go in, where they go in. And I hate to see these folks that buy these units, these affordable units, get caught with this three years down the road or whatever they have to change over, because it's going to be very expensive for them, and they probably cannot afford it. And then we're taking the chance that the state and/or the town or somebody is going to help support the cost, the price to put that in, when the developer, knowing that this is coming down, or believing, suspecting that this is coming down the road, can put this in now, and I don't know what it's going to cost the developer. I know what they cost. But my concern is that for someone who's bought an affordable unit, I don't care, I know they're buying it very expensively compared to the market rate units, but it's still a matter of, they're in affordable units because of their financial situation. And to put another, I don't know, it could be $30,000 on top of it, most people who are not in affordable units, they're going to have to go and finance that, or take it out of an IRA account or bank account that these folks may not have. So I am very concerned. I don't want to complicate this, because it can get complicated because of where our Board of Health is now. I'm concerned about it. I'm willing to back off if the rest of the board does not agree that we should.
I think option, option B is here, and for us to eliminate it, I mean, we've discussed before, you know, escrow accounts or whatever, and now our proposal is to leave the people that own these affordable units high and dry, in the event of? I think that's.
I think.
But if you're protecting the affordable units, it's a lot less expensive to put it in during new construction, too.
That's the only thing.
So to kind of Mark's point, the levy is going to be far more substantial if you don't do it during the new construction period. I'm not a voting member, so.
I mean, you do also have the HOA fees reduced for the affordable units. So presumptively, possibly, if the septic is overseen by the homeowners association in some equitable way, those affordable units would be covered, but maybe at a lower rate. But, yeah, you still have the problem about construction.
I wouldn't have a concern if the town had come to a conclusion as to how they were going to do this and we knew it was going to happen. There still remains a problem for affordable units and the expense that might come their way, maybe three years down the road. I think we need to continue to put this in for the affordable units, that the, those affordable units have their IA systems installed now.
And let it stand at that.
And let it stand at that. Exactly.
Absolutely.
Would it be through you, Madam Chairman? IA septic systems shall be installed for all the affordable units, period.
I like that.
Boy, that was easy. Okay. 21, you still, you still, I owe you my life.
The homeowner documents and rules and regulations of the master deed shall provide that only market-rate units may be rented for a minimum one-year period if rental is allowed with no seasonal or short-term rentals. Affordable units must remain owner-occupied. G22. Drained structures shall be constructed in accordance with the plans, and all roof areas shall be connected to the drained structures. Homeowners shall be appraised of all said, appraised of said installation. Maintenance and preservation of drained structures shall be the responsibility of and included as a common element in the homeowner association documents. Conditions prior to site disturbance. S1. The applicant shall create a limited dividend organization, copy to zoning board of appeals, and comply with all applicable mass housing requirements. S2. The endorsed plan shall be recorded at the registry of deeds. Addresses shall be as assigned by town engineering. S3. The town is specifically not wavering fees, not waiving fees associated with construction, including but not limited to the water line, water tapping sleeve and valve, water meters, services, and connections in engineering, such as any bond for the street opening permits, driveway permits, and building department fees. The plan involves the installation of one town-specified fire hydrant. Plans shall be submitted according to specifications of the water superintendent. Each unit shall have a dedicated water service. The applicant has stated that this is a private driveway. As such, the driveway and water main shall be privately owned, and maintenance shall be the responsibility of the homeowners. Any required utility easement shall be in the form and manner as prescribed by the town. Plans shall show the location of septic components and water service. Plans shall state all standards, policies, construction practices, or rules and regulations of the Falmouth Water Department shall be adhered to throughout the duration of the project.
I have just one insertion there, where we say each unit shall have a dedicated water service. I would add, and meter.
Yep.
Where is it?
And meter.
One, two, three, four, five, six line in the center.
So plans shall be submitted accordance to the specifications of the water superintendent. Each unit shall have a dedicated water service and meter. S4. Prior to starting work under the comprehensive permit, the applicant, the general contractor, and any necessary subcontractors, and the designated inspection engineer shall hold a pre-construction meeting with the building commissioner, representative of the Department of Public Works, Engineering Division, zoning administrator, water superintendent, Board of Health agent, Falmouth Fire, and Falmouth Police to review soil erosion and sediment controls, inspection requirements and procedures, review of conditions, construction traffic, traffic management, general project schedule, building permit submission requirements, street opening permit requirements, NPDES construction general permit requirements, work hours, and any other pertinent information. The 53G account and contract for the services of the designated inspection engineer must be in place prior to the above meeting. S5. The applicant shall meet with the Falmouth Police Department to determine when, if police details would be required. All police details required by the Falmouth Police Department, or per the applicant's own choice, shall be paid for by the applicant.
I have a question on four. Do we have to address the state highway in that?
Oh, good catch. Because it's a state highway.
It is, yeah.
It should be in there.
Yeah, we can certainly add that in there. I know we did reference it elsewhere as well, but yeah.
It is somewhere else. I think it should be in that paragraph also.
So.
You want to just insert state highway representatives somewhere, maybe after DP, or yeah, mass dot somewhere after, somewhere?
Maybe we'll just insert permits, DOT permit requirements, instead of street opening.
It just should be in there somewhere.
No, it shouldn't be, yeah.
Per mass DOT permit requirements.
Sorry to interrupt. So you did.
No, that's perfect.
Six.
Resuming on S6. Construction shall be in accordance with all requirements of town engineering, including the town's 2019 Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standard conditions. Which document is affixed herein is Appendix A. All uncontaminated stormwater runoff shall be directed to recharge within the premises. No increase in stormwater runoff, runoff, off, from the premise, that's a little awkward. Off from the premises is allowed. That's a little typo.
The off doesn't need to be there.
I think the second one is not necessary.
Yeah, so strike the second off.
Second off is not required.
To now read, no increase in stormwater runoff from the premises is allowed. Engineering sign-off is required prior to site disturbance and the issuance of any building permit for this project. Inspections referenced in the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standard conditions or others as directed by town engineering shall be performed by the designated inspection engineer. Erosion and sediment controls shall be installed, inspected, and maintained in good condition at all times. Failure to maintain adequate erosion and sediment control on site shall be grounds for stopping all construction activities on site until the issue is addressed. S7. Engineering noted that work within the state's road layout may require permitting with the state. The applicant shall comply with all state requirements. S8. The applicant shall file for a stormwater permit with the town prior to the issuance of any building permit. S9. At the applicant's expense, an inspectional engineer will be designated for the project from the firms that have been pre-vetted by the town. The inspectional engineer shall be responsible to review the EPA Construction General Permit Compliance and Town Stormwater Regulations, and will perform or oversee inspection-related services required with reports submitted to the zoning board of appeals and town engineering. The applicant shall establish a 53G account through the zoning board of appeals for the inspectional engineer. The inspection engineer will be specifically responsible for ensuring adherence to the requirements of the town's Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Standard conditions, inspection and approval of driveway subgrade, gravel base, binder course, and curbing and finish course. The applicant should provide an as-built survey with the binder, when the binder is down, to demonstrate that the driveway falls entirely within the layout. If any portion of the driveway is found to be located outside the recorded layout, the driveway will be removed and reconstructed within the layout in these areas. At no point shall the contractor construct on driveway surface that was not inspected and approved by the inspection engineer. DPW will oversee right-of-way work only. I've got a question about that.
What does that mean?
Yeah, and it's a state highway.
I would strike that, because that will be understated. I would strike that because that will be understated.
Do we feel we need to have the inspector more often than the normal project because there's no wiggle room at all in this?
I would leave that up to the inspector. I think if, you know, we typically.
Once he sees there's no wiggle room.
Right. We typically.
There might be a reduction in lots, but it's built itself.
But don't we want an as-built on the road, something on the driveway?
We're going to get one.
We're going to get the profiles and all the edge of road, all the center of road. I think we're going to get that one along.
Right there.
The applicant shall provide an as-built survey when the binder is down to demonstrate the driveway falls entirely within the layout. Continuing on, the inspection engineer may confer with town engineering and will be specifically responsible to review the as-built plans, CO8, for compliance with the approved plans. S10. Prior to site disturbance, the applicant shall be provided a copy of the approved town stormwater permit to the board, application and fees to town engineering. The applicant shall provide a copy of the EPA Construction General Permit to Engineering and the Board. The installed erosion and sediment control shall be inspected and approved by the town or the inspectional engineer. S11. The applicant shall provide to the police, building department, engineering, and zoning board of appeals the name, phone number, and email address of a project contact individual for the duration of the construction process to ensure that any questions or concerns, including those of a butters and residents, are timely managed. S12. Mature trees, particularly those proximate to lot lines, shall be maintained to the extent possible. Trees straddling the property line shall be assumed to be jointly owned and cannot be damaged or removed without the prior written approval of both parties. The limit of work line shall be installed and inspected prior to site disturbance and may include adjusting the limit of work to protect root systems of trees onto the premises.
I have a question.
Go ahead, Tony.
It says inspected, the limit of work, so the limit of work line shall be installed and inspected, is that inspected by the inspector that's, so that just runs to that. All right. That's around my question.
So we can insert, shall be installed and inspected, after inspected by the inspectional engineer.
The applicant shall confirm the proposed mailbox location with the U.S. Postal Service.
Does anyone think we need lighting at this mailbox location?
So the applicant has provided or proposed four pole lights, one of which would be proximate to the entrance.
The applicant shall provide architectural plans to the board for review and approval for Lot 20. I've got a question since this may be changing, lots and so on. Do we, what are you suggesting there?
I guess in order to not get too off track here, maybe what we'll do is identify that Lot 20 is the lot that they're currently identifying as Lot 20, which is where they are designating that they plan to move the existing home. So, yeah, maybe what we want to do is identify that it's the lot that the home will be moved to. I mean, yeah, because right now Lot 20.
How about if necessary?
Yeah, it might not change.
It might not change, so if necessary.
We have nothing right now, though, on Lot 20, nothing.
Right now, you have, I think, just a potential footprint for a home, but we don't know. I think that's where they're proposing to move the existing home to, but it also indicated that that existing home would be expanded. We don't know what type of expansion is planned.
And let's refer to it as the existing home rather than by lot number.
So what do we say for the existing Lot 20? And if it changes, we can track that?
I like Frank's suggestion.
Frank is right.
Okay, so he's.
The existing, yeah.
Architectural plans for review and approval for the existing home.
Existing home, yep.
And its proposed location.
That's even better, perfect.
Ready to go on? S15. The applicant shall provide a bus shelter for the development proximate to the westerly end of the sidewalk and shall provide a play area for the development. Plans shall be provided to the zoning board of appeals for review and approval.
I was thinking that this bus shelter could go over near the mailbox, maybe, because that's near the end of the road and there's parking, so if people were dropping their kids off, there's a place to sit while you wait.
Isn't that proximate to the westerly end of the sidewalk anyhow? That's close.
Yeah, but I was also thinking one of those parking spaces could be the charger, the car charger. You could charge while you're waiting for your kid to get on the bus. There you go.
Yeah. You have enough electricity to get the Dunkin' Donuts.
Well, where would you, you put it by the mailbox?
No, you put the charger at the end of the parking spot.
I don't know if you can designate where they're going to put the charging stations.
Just require one somewhere?
I'm assuming that those guest spaces are for guests of the residence and that if somebody were to have car charging, it would be part of their house. So in other words, if you live there, you can charge your electric vehicle at your home. If you are a guest, you park in a guest parking space. So as opposed to like an apartment development where everybody has a guest spot. Here you have particular parking on the lot for the people that live there. So I wouldn't necessarily designate that they would have to.
So we'll just leave it alone.
Leave it alone.
Yep, got it.
Well, also missing a board voted spot there.
Oh, yes.
Prior to building permit, B1. The applicant is required to provide, one, a regulatory agreement and declaration of restrictive covenants for ownership project. Two, an affordable housing deed rider specifying that affordable units shall remain affordable in perpetuity. Three, a declaration of trust for the homeowners association. And four, homeowner documents, including master deed and rules and regulations. These collective documents shall be provided to the zoning board of appeals for review for consistency with this decision by town council prior to the issuance of any building permit and subsequent recording, recorded at the Barnstable County Registry of Deeds. A recorded copy shall be filed with the zoning board of appeals and the town's housing coordinator. The applicant shall establish a limited dividend organization, limited in its profits under Mass General Law Chapter 40B, and any excess profits shall be paid by the applicant and distributed as required by the subsidizing agency in accordance with applicable law, regulations, and guidelines. The applicant shall provide confirmation of the establishment of a limited dividend organization to the zoning board of appeals. B2. The fire hydrant shall be installed as approved by the fire department and comply with Falmouth Fire Department regulations. B3. The developer shall comply with all water superintendent requirements, including the installation of specified water main and a hydrant for the development shown on the site plan. The applicant shall provide an easement for the water main extension in the form approved by the town. The tap and sleeve assembly shall be inspected, including water, excuse me, including pressure testing, chlorinated, and sampling. The developer shall provide an as-built to the water superintendent upon completion. Costs related to the easement and provision of water service and metering shall be borne by the developer. B4. Prior to the issuance of building permits, the applicant shall conduct a hydrant flow test to determine available flow and pressure to fight a fire and provide the results to the water superintendent and fire chief. The procedure for flushing, disinfecting, and pressure testing of the water main shall be approved by the town's water superintendent. B5. A certified plan with site details for the whole development plus a certified plot plan for each individual lot stamped by a licensed surveyor shall be provided to the zoning board of appeals, engineering, and inspection engineer for review and approval prior to the start work and submission of an application for a building permit. At a minimum, the plan shall show the following: lot dimensions, driveway limits of paving, parking, stall locations and dimensions, limits of sidewalk, building locations, dimension building footprints matching the architectural plan dimensions, closest distance to nearest property line from each building, locations of drainage structures, including limits of infiltration areas, retaining wall details, hydrant location, stormwater pipe locations, and invert elevations, draining structure rim and invert elevations, depth, width, and length of stone infiltration beds, including roof infiltration areas, septic information, fencing, sight lighting, and limits of work, which shall also be demarcated in the field. This plan shall serve as the base for an as-built plan of the project upon completion. Plans shall also include the designation that drainage or septic areas shall not be built on. The applicant shall have a bus shelter added to the plan proximate to the project sidewalk. The applicant shall provide a designated, excuse me, shall provide and designate a safe play area for the development.
I have one addition there. The landscaping plans indicated that there may be decks or patios. So I would just add in this list here that a location of a shed, deck, and patio that they may choose to install or not be added to the plan.
That's to the final as-built plan, not to the preliminary.
Well, okay, so the problem is, is that the final as-built will show what you put in. But I think we want it included in the preliminary plan because the preliminary plan is what the building permit is based upon. And so if you intend to build a deck or a patio, they would expect to have that on the plan as part of what they approve for the building.
But will they know?
You know, and the issue with sheds is that the state has determined that sheds are an insubstantial change. But given the size of these lots and the size of a potential shed, they could overwhelm the lot. So I don't know if you want to prespecify a particular-sized shed, but I think, given the number of these developments we've had in the past and the individual homeowners come back in afterward and they're all asking to put sheds in, so I think it's just almost easier to designate in advance that you can have a shed of a particular size.
Well, the town already has that regulation. Who would we be to change it?
What's that?
There are.
400 square feet.
Yeah, town, are you going to know it's a 200 square foot? Who are we to change what the town's shed regulations are? Wouldn't they, if they can have one, can't they have the same shed everybody else can have?
Well, so, yes, but you have a particular problem here where, I mean, where these lots are today, these sized lots, I don't know that they'd be able to fit a 200-square-foot shed on that lot. And it's also not included within the drainage and lot coverage calculations. So if you put in, you know, they have a base plan, and now the more impervious area you add to that is also going to change the impervious lot coverage. And they're asking you later on to waive those coverages. And so if those items are not added into the plan, it's not going to be covered by the waiver.
How about if we require them to have gutters and drywells? Then it becomes a non-issue, just like the houses are required.
Well, she's also talking about patios here, too.
Right, so you can still have, you know, gutters and drywells, but you still do not want 100% of the lot covered by impervious surface.
But the patios would have to be impervious, or, yeah, that's all.
Well, there's none shown on the plan right now.
So I'm just going to, if I may, Madam Chairman, you're essentially just asking that the plan say possible location of future shed or future patio is calculated so that we know the draining is still sufficient.
Okay, well, that's all right.
Or not affect would be better, because it leaves it open to do it as long as it's an impervious patio and then they put drywells and gutters on the shed.
I think that addresses the issue that people are going to have a, we're just making sure that we're not going to have a flood.
So you have the verbiage?
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry. I understand the impervious aspect of the patio. For some of these lots, you're not going to be fitting anything on it. And what do we, so what I want to try and understand, since I could roll in this one is, what are we allowing them to do? What are we allowing, saying they can't do with regard, let's start with patios, and then I want to go back to sheds again, because some of these lots, you can't, you're not going to fit a doghouse on these lots. So what are we saying they can do with regard to patio? That they can build it anywhere they want as long as it's impervious? They can make it as large as they want as long as it's impervious? Or are we restricting size or what are we doing? Is it just as simple as if you want to build one, it has to be impervious?
Each one of these lots is a different size.
I know.
Very unusual, it's an unusual lot with unusual dimensions, retaining walls, so I, we'll be here.
They can build an unusual dimension shed. I mean, it should be up to them.
Although, when you did another development, there were some lots that were of a smaller size, and the developer presented a standard shed for the development. So that, I think they wanted to maintain some consistency where, you know, that, for that particular development, and you may not necessarily want to do that.
Do we want to kick this to the homeowners association, Democratic, let the people who live there decide how big the shed can be, how big patio should be?
Except that you have no control of lot coverage and what's going to happen with drainage and stormwater.
So going back to the patio, we simply condition it that all patios, however they are determined, shall be impervious. In other words, you like to put a size on.
Well, can the applicant come back and just ask for an substantial change if they want to put a patio on? I mean, this is the thing that seems to be.
Oh, of course.
Then it can be a case-by-case basis. I don't want to make more work for us on the road.
No, but I guess the question is, you know, just pick if you have a circumstance where you have an affordable homeowner and they say, I want to add a patio that's, we'll say it's pervious. So now you're going to ask them to go get an engineer to upgrade the information on their lot to show what their impervious lot coverage is now, because that will affect it, as will a shed. So my.
A shed wouldn't affect it if it had gutters, downspouts, and drywells.
It's still.
As a patio wouldn't affect the groundwater as long as it was a pervious surface, right?
Right, but the shed will count toward your total lot coverage. And if you, I don't know, pick a number, say you have 70% lot coverage by structure parking, paving, and you put a shed in, you're going to increase that.
I thought that's all waived.
I've lost track of what you're doing here.
I have too.
This is a section about a plan, which says nothing about sheds, decks, or patios. I know you want to add them, but where do you want to add them and what do you want to say? Because this conversation is going mad crazy.
It should be standalone. Sheds and patios can affect the groundwater in a negative fashion or whatever. Then they can determine how they want to do it. I mean, we already have requirements for sheds, three feet from the boundary and maximum of 200 square feet. If they can't fit it, they can't have it. And why are we complicating it any?
So I think this list was intended just to indicate to the surveyor that we need all this particular information and data on a plan so we can sign off on a building permit. We've found in the past that we get plans that are insufficiently detailed, and then we have to ask people to go back and add those details in. So we're now trying to get in front of that and tell people in advance what we're looking for them to add on to the plan.
What about a guy who wants to put a patio down three years down the road? I think that, I think Jim's suggestion of just a proposed location, is that what you said?
Yeah, just, I'm not concerned about sheds. The patio issue, I think, might be, just to say that they should indicate where a proposed deck or patio could be.
That's about all we can do.
And then what happens with that proposed?
The engineer?
Well, if it's actually built, it's the lot calculations, it's already on, it's already there, it's included.
Already baked in.
If it's not, well, great, there's less use of the land.
It's a water machine problem, really, not ours.
That's exactly what will happen. Let's go with Jim's then.
Proposed.
Do you have the verbiage, Marie?
Okay, location of possible future sheds, decks, patios to be.
I would strike the word, I'd strike the shed. We have, I agree with Mark, there's enough regulations, I think, that addresses that issue.
Okay, so location of possible future deck patio to be drawn on the plan?
Yeah, show on the plan and reflect lot coverage.
That's good.
And then the type, we'll just waive.
Just to game this one step out, if the lot coverage, if, let's say, the condition is 45, not to exceed 45%, and suddenly they come back, it's 46%, I think that could be approved as an substantial change, and we can ask the zoning administrator to do it for us. Are we ready to go on, Madam Chairman?
Yeah, I think we're at six, right?
C6. The applicant shall provide the zoning board of appeals with a final approval letter for mass housing. Prior. Prior occupancy permit, O1, the address for the development will be assigned by engineering after the recorded subdivision is submitted to the board and assessing is provided the parcel identification for all the lots. Addresses shall be properly posted in compliance with Section 99-1, a fixing of legible numbers required prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. O2, the final lottery agent, lottery plan and marketing plan shall be submitted to the zoning board of appeals and the housing coordinator prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. O3, landscaping shall be installed as presented in accordance with the landscape plan with all plant materials maintained in good health. Any invasive vegetation shall be removed. Any materials substantially diseased or dead shall be removed and replaced with similar-sized plants within two years of the final certificate of occupancy by the developer. The landscaping shall not impede on site distance at North Falmouth Highway. All landscaping, including the play area, shall be maintained in perpetuity by the homeowners' association or successors. Fencing may be required as part of any retaining wall to ensure the safety of children based on the height as reviewed by the building commissioner. O 3.5a, permanent monumentation shall be placed at lot corners to delineate boundaries as approved by town engineering or peer inspectional engineer.
Question.
Go ahead, Tony, I have one, too.
Says permanent monuments. There are all kinds of permanent monuments. Do we care if it's granite, concrete, pipe or otherwise?
That's why it says monumentation.
I defer, I would defer to the engineer.
I think we're deferring it to town engineering as far as what they're requiring.
I see plenty of deeds with metal spike in ground versus concrete bound or-
That's what I was going to ask. The peer review suggested spikes for the driveways that were shared? I don't know if anyone remembers that?
Well, there may be some changes there, so I guess the question is-
So we don't make that a condition?
You can't put a concrete bound, really, in the middle of a driveway.
Okay.
Well, you can't, you just look great.
I say we leave this to the engineers.
Leave it to the engineers, got it. O four.
The final certificate of occupancy shall not be issued until all required site work, including landscaping, drainage or other improvements are completed and the site as-built has been approved. The developer shall request the inspectional engineer to issue an email to the zoning board of appeals confirming completion and compliance with all requirements under their oversight. The developer may request the ZBA consider a bond for the value of incomplete work to ensure that the work is complete in accordance with the plans. O five, any damage to the North Falmouth Highway during the construction process shall be repaired to state standards at the expense of the applicant. Six, prior to the issuance of any certificate of occupancy, the applicant shall enter into a monitoring agreement to be reviewed by town council. All costs associated with the monitoring shall be borne by the applicant until the sale of the last affordable unit and thereafter by the sellers of the affordable units. A copy of all financial information by the monitoring agent shall be provided to the zoning board of appeals and the housing coordinator after the initial round of sales. O seven, the four affordable units shall be designated, I have to think about this one.
Shall, just leave it, shall be designated and shown on a plan?
Well, right?
It's subject to state, final state approval.
It is.
Right. So if we just make them designate which ones they want, just leave off numbers, right?
I think you could potentially say evenly distributed throughout the development or something, so that there's an emphasis that they be properly spaced.
So the four affordable units shall be evenly distributed throughout the development as shown on the recorded, on the record plan. Addresses shall be properly posted and assigned by engineering prior to a final certificate of occupancy. One affordable unit must be completed for three market rate units. A certificate of occupancy for the final market rate unit may not be issued until all affordable units have been completed and granted a certificate of occupancy. All dwellings shall have the same exterior appearance and construction quality and be in conformance with approved plans. O eight, a certified as-built shall be provided to the ZBA, engineering and the inspectional engineer for review for conformance to the approved plans prior to the final certificate of occupancy being issued at each lot. The plan shall be on an overlay of the plan described in Condition Number B five. Any deviation from the approved plan shall be clearly shown in red line over the base plan, which should be faded back for clarity. The as-built shall be certified by both a licensed surveyor and registered engineer that work was performed in conformance with the approved plans and all permits. The designated inspectional engineer shall review and approve this plan and conform that this plan includes the required information certifications. No certificate of occupancy shall be issued until the as-built plan is approved by the board.
Do we approve as-built plans?
I'm sorry, what?
Do we approve as-built plans? I don't recall doing it.
So, no, it doesn't typically go to the board, it typically comes to my office.
Okay. Then in accordance with normal procedure.
May I ask a question?
Yeah, go ahead, Tony.
What is the reason, on the as-built plans, it says as-built shall be certified by both a licensed surveyor and registered engineer. Why is it both and not or?
I think the engineer is more concerned about the location of things, and the engineer is concerned about the construction materials and-
It's both.
So this is something we normally do?
Yes, so, yeah, they each have separate licenses that cover, yeah.
So did you get the end of that? No certification of occupancy shall be issued until the as-built plan is-
Approved per normal ZBA procedure.
O nine, ready?
Yeah.
The applicant shall provide an ADA-compliant sidewalk along the interior driveway. The sidewalk shall have tactile strips where the driveway intersects with North Falmouth Highway. The project driveway shall have a vertical curbing on the side with the sidewalk. O ten, the landscape architect shall review compliance with the approved landscape plan and shall issue a letter to the board certifying if the landscape was installed in accordance with the approved plans prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy for the final unit. Eleven, dark sky compliant lighting shall be provided at dwelling doorways in addition to the development lights distributed along the driveway per revised plans. Spotlights are prohibited. This shall be included in the homeowner's documents. O twelve, the interior sidewalk shall be installed per plans and maintained in perpetuity by the homeowners' association. Final certificate of occupancy shall not issue until the project sidewalk is completed or a bond issued to ensure completion. Waivers. W one, any waiver not specifically granted herein is denied. W two, waiver from Section 247.8 Wildlife Corridor Overlay District. Waiver requested as preserving any significant open space on the property would restrict the number of lots and affordable units. W three, waiver from Section 240-11.2B Minimum Lot Dimensions. Waiver requested for minimum lot area to allow minimum of 3,500 square feet. Waive the minimum lot width to allow a minimum of 15 feet. Waive the minimum frontage to allow a minimum frontage of 15 feet. Waive the minimum lot with requirements to allow lots as narrow as 15 feet in any dimension. Waiver requested as strict compliance would restrict the number of lots and affordable units.
Hold that, yeah. I object to the 15 feet, I don't think they should be less than 30 feet.
It would be necessary with-
There is the option, right, right below. So we're holding that one. Do you want to, do you want to?
I think that, I've always felt that this is just, they jam too much stuff in this, and I think there should be at least-
With four less units, it should be-
And I'm particularly concerned about the frontage, particularly on the circle. 15 feet for a frontage is just ridiculous. It should be at least 30.
So you want option?
I just want to make the statement that-
It gets more complicated than that, depending on how we can figure-
It does, but I think there should, there should be some guidelines to figure out how to do it.
But I think it should be even greater than 30. It should be no less than 60, 61. I've come up with 69 in certain lots, but we can't tell them what to do. But 30 is much too small, 15 is much too small.
15 is way too small.
I mean, if you're taking, again, they're the ones that have to figure this out. If you're taking four lots out, the ones I took out, and then again, it was just for me to take a look at this, to understand this, what I come down with is that you really, your minimum lot frontage is almost 61 feet. So 30 feet doesn't do any, 15 definitely doesn't do anything. 30 feet doesn't do anything. You really, I know it's very difficult, if you didn't do this analysis of each lot, why I came to the 60.975 feet, but I'm telling you right now, 30 feet's too small.
How about 45?
It really, again, this, let me just say this. If you, if you, it depends on what lots they take out. We're restricting them to 16 units on a piece of land, and they can move this around any, any way they want, am I correct?
Yes.
Any way they want. And to say that a lot's, a frontage is 30, I don't think that's helping anyone's concerns that we've had from the very, from day one here. 30-foot frontage is nothing, and every one of these lots, you could easily go to 60 feet. But again, I know that's difficult if you didn't take the plans and do the analysis of certain lots that you might take off, because we don't know what it's going to be.
They're going to do more than take the lots off, they're going, they can, they have the ability to shift as well.
Well, the whole idea is they will shift north, they'll shift south, well, everything will shift north theoretically, but I don't know what they'll do. But I think, all I'm saying to you is that 30 feet is much too small, and it should be something greater than that. And you have to do an analysis of it, but I think you got to go more than 30 feet.
Well, if you came up with the potential of 60, 45 shouldn't be much of a limiting factor for them, and it's certainly more palatable than 15.
I would go with the 45.
I like, I like Mark's, too.
Yeah, I'd go with the 45, because I know what they can do with it.
Go to 50.
They've got a lot of leeway at 45.
I'm not too concerned about the lots along the straight part of the street. It's the ones at the top of the, at the top of the hill at the, at the roundabout. That, that's just, they just jam too much stuff up there.
That's because it's the top of the hill, too.
So I guess the question is, so they have asked you to vote for the waiver as-is. So I assume you're now going to vote these separately, but I guess what you would be doing is potentially considering denying it and then instructing them what you are willing to grant for a waiver.
Oh, do you think we should be doing these individually?
Well, I think when you get to, well-
To waivers?
This is only the third one, we can start over and vote them now if you want.
I, you know, I guess whatever tweaking you may do, I don't care.
So let's vote that one now.
All right.
We start again at a vote.
So W three?
Yes, so you would like all the 15s that they requested to be changed to 45.
Yep, is everyone in agreement with that?
I would go, yeah.
So is there any reason why we wouldn't just go back to one and start voting these individually? Because we're obviously with the-
But we can do them in a lump at the end. We just did that one, we made that one 45. We'll just keep going, and then we'll do them as a group, right?
Well, I guess the question is, you're going to be approving some waivers and potentially denying others. So I don't think you're going to be able to, like, find things. You can vote them as a group because you've amended the language that you want.
I see what you're saying, okay.
But I think with the waivers, it's going to be an approval, a denial, or, you know, denial with limit, whatever it is.
You got to go back.
So let's start at W one and do it.
Yeah, because, I mean, the peer engineer said that we can eliminate half of these waivers if we eliminate four or eight. So, I mean, we're going to be able to, I think, we can carve these up and adjust them and vote them as we go, would make the most sense.
So your suggestion is we just either vote them up or down as written at this point?
I would, yeah, or you can certainly, I guess, if you're, if you're not approving, you can deny, and then you can specify what you would grant, maybe.
Like we just did.
We can amend and vote?
Well, so they've, they've requested specific waivers, and they've told you, I want this waiver that says this. So if you're telling them, no, I'm not going to grant you that waiver, I don't know that you can rewrite, rewrite what they've asked for. But I think what you can do is deny if you don't agree with the wording as they've proposed. You can deny, and then you can say, maybe as an addendum, however, we would grant a minimum of X.
Well, we have to do something, because we don't want them leaving here with no guidance.
No, I think it's a value to, you know, you need to vote yes or no, based on exactly what they asked, and then you can comment.
All right, deny, but parenthetically, we would approve 45.
All right, so three is done. Yeah, we can start at the beginning, yeah. Let's, let's do them all.
W one, any waiver not specifically granted herein is denied. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, two.
Waiver from Section 247.8 Wildlife Corridor Overlay District. Waiver requested as preserving any significant open space on the property would restrict the number of lots and affordable units.
No approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
W three, waiver from Section 240-11.2B Minimum Lot Dimensions. Waiver requested for minimum lot area to allow minimum 3,500 square feet. Waive the minimum lot width to allow a minimum of 15 feet. Waive the minimum frontage to allow a minimum frontage of 15 feet. Waive the minimum lot width requirement to allow lots as narrow as 15 feet in any dimension. Waiver requested as strict compliance would restrict the number of lots and affordable units. Madam Chairman?
With parenthetical note of 45 feet.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
And do you want to leave the minimum lot size, or?
Well, the 45 feet's going to increase it. The math is going to make it larger anyway, so it's going to eliminate that. I mean, if they make it wider in the front, I mean, it's going to make the lot wider. It can't do anything but, so I don't even think we really have to touch it.
Well, we're talking, the problem is we're talking lot frontage, not lot width. And there are two in the zoning bylaw. You have, in this zone, a minimum of 125 feet lot frontage and a minimum lot width of 100 feet through the lot with the house, basically where the house is going to be built, so.
But the widths aren't going to change, because they're not going to be putting a house behind it or anything, so that 35, with the, with the frontage increased, that 3,500 number has to increase.
Theoretically, it would.
I mean, there's no way that it couldn't, though. I mean, it's beyond theoretical.
A lot of things I can do.
In practice, it would.
It really, since we cannot tell them which lots to change and how to change them, we have to try and figure out, what we figured out is that 45 is the minimum. What they do with that 45 and how they configure the lot, going back in the form that it goes, however it goes back, it's going to be, it'll be surprising, well, it'll be interesting to see what happens.
So I guess what I would also present is that if they do make these reductions, there are going to be changes necessarily to the plan, to the engineering, to the drainage, to everything. So maybe what you want to do is also state that you want that amended plan to be presented to you, so that you have a final chance to look at it, your peer has a chance to look at it and say, yes, it's corrected circumstances, et cetera.
Can we do that, Maureen, though? I mean, we're issuing, I don't think we can do that. I'm issuing a decision tonight that is, ultimately, the state and the building inspector is going to, we can require a plan be submitted, so we can require, I don't know if we can-
Just pull out the plan and look at it, and appreciate that if you go up to 45 frontage, I mean, it's, it's going to increase, there's no way it couldn't.
Can I suggest that we're going to have a problem moving forward to W five?
Yes.
On setbacks, this whole thing, because now you're going to have to deal with, they're asking for, may I go that far?
Yes, of course.
Because now they're asking for a setback number of five feet. We've all had an issue with how they're going to get access to the backyard, get past the house. So on the one hand, we're saying, well, your frontage has to be no less than 45. We can't tell them we had to do that. So now we're going to end up having to say, your minimum setback has to be X. It can't be five, because we already know that, well, theoretically, there's a problem getting back there. So now we're going to have to start saying which, how far the setbacks are going to be.
Well, if they take four units out and they spread it, that five number goes away, too.
But the difference-
So we just deny it, and then they have to-
I can make these lots do almost anything.
So can they.
I'm talking about them when I say I. I'm not going to do anything. But I think you're going to have to get into, just a thought, denying the minimum to allow a minimum setback of five feet, and maybe just go all the way back to the minimum of 10 feet.
Yeah, well, that's what's going to happen anyway, if we deny it.
It's not going to happen, no.
No, we have to vote, when we get to W five, that's exactly what's not going to happen.
Well, it could happen.
Well, if we, if we deny the five- Well, if we, if we deny the 5, what, do you think he's gonna come back with 6? I mean, he's gonna have.
No, you're gonna say, you're gonna say, you're gonna revert to what the zoning bylaw says, 10.
Well, if we deny the 5, it goes back to the book anyway.
Believe me, if you do an analysis, I, we can't always do it, they've got the room to do it.
Yeah.
Depends on what they do.
So, if we deny the 5, then they're back to the 10. I mean, and they, they don't have any need for it. I mean, they're taking four units out, that's, that's 20% of the density. I mean, there, there's just no reason for them to have any 5 foot.
I think it's covered, if I may, I think it's covered with the 45. I don't think it's the best thing, but I think 45 can work, because then they're gonna have to do something with it. I think the 3,500 square feet, I don't know what they're gonna do with that, but they can. And we just wait to get to W5 and deal with the setbacks there, because they're asking for a waiver.
Yeah, we're denying it.
So, we just, we get there, that's one of the issues.
Okay. All right, so 4, right?
W4, waiver from section 240 11.3A, maximum lot coverage. Waiver requested for structures to allow maximum coverage of 50% for lot coverage by structures. Waiver also requested for lot coverage by structures, parking, paving to be a maximum of 75%. Waiver requested as strict compliance with dimensional requirements would restrict the number of lots and affordable units.
Under the structures, parking, paving, do we add the patios and the decks onto that?
No, it's their request for a waiver, if we don't change it.
So, we deny, and then?
I don't understand what you're talking about.
This one, I think we can approve, because we're asking that the patios be included. I think the last, it was, it was an issue about drainage, making sure that the drainage calculations were.
We're still gonna run into trouble with setbacks.
This one doesn't cover setbacks.
It's gonna affect it, maybe, anyway, I don't know.
All right, so let's just go with that one then. Everyone's okay with 4?
Motion to grant.
Second.
As is.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none? Okay, 5.
Waiver from 240 11.4A, setback requirements. Waiver requested to allow the minimum setback of 15 feet from the street. Waiver requested to allow a minimum setback of 5 feet for side, uh, and rear lot lines. Waiver requested as strict compliance with the dimensional requirements would restrict the number of lots and affordable units.
Motion to deny, parenthetically, except 10.
Second.
That's just for the setback.
Setback, sideline.
Sideline setback, yes.
To deny.
To deny and do 10.
Still allow the 15 in the front.
Right.
Yeah.
The board would.
They can, they can do that.
Yeah.
Without any problem, and.
There was a motion, did I second?
Deny with this parenthetical that we would accept a 10-foot sideline setback.
Second. Everyone's okay with that?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
W6, waiver from Article 6 Design Standard, Section 305-24A6. Waiver from the street centerline offsets of no less than 300 feet to allow the proposed centerline to be offset approximately 180 feet from Burke Lane. Waiver requested as the property is only 100 feet from the Burke Lane-North Falmouth Highway intersection, has only 113 feet of frontage, cannot comply with a 300-foot minimum. The subdivision driveway is located at the farthest offset possible from Burke Lane.
Motion to a grant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
W7, waiver from section 305-24B1A, width of layout 44 feet. Waiver requested to allow minimum road layout of 26 feet. Waiver requested due to the narrow layout of the existing parcel, strict compliance would restrict the number of lots and affordable units.
Driveway. Motion to grant, and would note that it's a driveway.
Did you change road to driveway?
Uh, will be changed.
Yep.
All right, so here's the, the issue is that their, the language of their waiver, they talk about a minimum road layout, so maybe what you're doing is if you're accepting their layout, what you would do is approve and specify that it's a driveway.
You're gonna change. All right, motion to grant with the parenthetical that it's a driveway, not a road.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
W8, waiver from section 305-24B1B, pavement width. Waiver requested to allow pavement width of 20 feet. Waiver requested due to the narrow layout of the existing parcel, strict compliance would restrict the number of lots and affordable units.
Motion to grant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
W9, waiver from section 305-24B1D, reverse curve tangent, 100 feet. Tangent proposed to be 63.4 feet. Waiver requested due to the narrow layout of the existing parcel, strict compliance would restrict the number of lots and affordable units.
Motion to grant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
W10, waiver from section 305-24B5, street line intersection radius of 25 feet. Street line intersection radius proposed to be 20 feet at the southern radius with North Falmouth Highway. Waiver requested due to the narrow layout of the existing parcel, strict compliance would restrict the number of lots and affordable units.
Motion to grant.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
W11, waiver from section 305-24B8, street layout with width of, driveway layout?
Yes.
With 60 feet on a budding property not owned by the subdivider. Full waiver requested due to the narrow layout of the existing parcel, due to the narrow layout of the existing parcel. Strict compliance would restrict the number of lots and affordable units.
Motion to deny with the parenthetical that the town engineer points out that this is not applicable.
Second.
All those in favor of denying?
Aye. W12, waiver requested from section 305-24D2. Dead-end streets no longer than 500 feet. Full waiver requested minimum dead-end street length of 664 feet is required to provide access to all lots at the rear of the development. Strict compliance would restrict the number of lots and affordable units.
Motion to grant.
Second. All those in favor?
Can I offer an amendment?
Yeah, go for it.
Should it say dead-end driveway, or?
Oh, yeah.
Well, yeah.
Or do we deny this and say that it's, it's not a, it's, it's a driveway, it's not a dead-end street?
Yeah, well, then if it's a driveway, then it's maybe not applicable.
Right, that's why I ask.
All right, so, are you?
Motion to deny, it's not applicable.
Right.
Same as the.
Second. All those in favor of denying?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, 13.
Waiver requested from section 305-24D3, outside, street line turnaround radius of 60 feet. Waiver requested for radius of 55 feet. Waiver requested due to the narrow layout of the existing parcel, strict compliance would restrict the number of lots and affordable units.
Motion to grant.
Wait a minute, we gotta.
It's a driveway, isn't it the same reason?
Right, but you could, yeah, I guess what you could do still is you could grant the layout that they've proposed and just, with the caveat that it's really not applicable because it's not a street.
So, does this engineering note apply to all these? Well, it has to the last three, and it only applies, it seems to be written for the one, as it's underlined.
I think we should leave it at 50, at 55, 'cause the fire department noted that they were okay with that.
Right, I agree.
Yes.
All right, so do you want to then, um, look at an approval and then identify that it's a driveway?
Yeah.
Right.
So, do you wanna re-vote that?
Motion to grant with the, uh, parenthetical that it's a dri, it's a driveway turnaround radius.
Second, me, all those in favor?
Not applicable, does we put that as well?
No, 'cause the fire department approved it.
Fire department wanted that.
They said they would, so I think we should have something in there about that.
You okay with it?
Yeah, but I, yeah, yeah, that's fine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
W14, waiver from section 305-26, open spaces. Waiver requested in entirety, preserving any significant open space would restrict the number of lots and affordable units.
Motion to grant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
W15, waiver from section 305-27, protection of natural features. Waiver requested in entirety, preserving natural features would restrict the number of lots and affordable units.
Motion to grant.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none.
W16, waiver from section 30530, sidewalks, grass plots, and street trees per standard cross-sections, Schedule A and B.
Denied by the Board in its.
Aye.
I vote to approve all of the, approve or deny the waivers as specified by the Board in its discussion tonight.
Second.
All those in approving.
That's a hard word to, or deny.
To approve. To deny.
Now, I'll have James restate the decision.
Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals herein referred to as the Board being of the opinion aforesaid, acting under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B, Sections 20 to 23, and 760 CMR 56.002. Your motion?
I make the motion to approve.
Following a motion made by Member Duffy and seconded by,
Duffy.
Voted as, as you call it, to either grant or deny, so is that a motion to approve? Scott.
Any further discussion?
No.
I feel good.
Are you unanimous?
Sorry?
Are you unanimous?
Aye, no.
Yeah.
Aye, aye, aye.
So, I'll read it back then. Thou therefore be it resolved that the Zoning Board of Appeals herein referred to the Board being of the opinion aforesaid, acting under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B, Section 20 to 23, and 760 CMR 56.00. Following a motion made by Mr. Duffy and seconded by Chairman Murphy, voted 5 to 0 to grant a comprehensive permit with conditions for the construction of 16 home ownership three-bedroom dwellings, four of which shall be affordable in perpetuity to households whose income is not more than 80% of the area median income, as determined by HUD and EO HLC, at 19 North Falmouth Highway, North Falmouth, Massachusetts, Assessors Map 15, Section 3, Parcel 5, Lot 000, the premises. The comprehensive permit will be subject to the conditions adopted by the Board.
Witness Manson lozenges.
Nice job.
Thank you.
All right. Moving along. Minutes. I'm sure you've had a lot of time.
We are, we are tabling, but soon to be caught up.
Not to worry.
My apologies.
Zoning Administrator Updates. We'll do that next week, too. Okay? More discussion.
Next week.
Next week.
Nice job.
Uh, we, we do, just, just as one issue, we do have the sidewalk for 85 Brickham.
Oh, yeah.
And we, I think, sent out some proposed dates on Saturdays, so if the Board members want to reconsider.
And freeze our tails off.
Right, that will work.